County Commissioners Board of Work Session. It is Monday, July 11th, 2022. It is 9:02 a.m. This is a hybrid meeting. We're in Building 1, Room 280. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina McHea. I'm the Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Ty Mensah in the boardroom, and Commissioner Gary Edwards joining us via Zoom. County Manager Ramiro Chavez is in the boardroom, as well as Director of Public Works Jennifer Walker. And I'm sorry, I could not see the rest of the staff on there. The topics on today's agendas is the Public Works Department Draft 2023 through 2028 Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP, and the decision is requested. So with this, I'll hand it off to County Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. This is the yearly event where the county engineer is required 2% to the legislative authority, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, the Transportation Improvement Program 2023-2028 in this particular case. So we will look back today, the formal presentation by Scott Lindlum, the county engineer. Obviously, at this point, you will not be approving the program itself. You will have the opportunity to listen to the details and provide any feedback, questions, or any comments that you may have. And Scott will walk you through the next steps in the process and give you a larger perspective as to what is intended in response to this briefing. With that in mind, I'm gonna see if I can share the screen. I think I just advanced to the second. Did I? Oh.
You're wrong, Scott.
Thank you, County Manager. Good morning, Commissioner Scott Lindlum, County Engineer, Public Works. With me today are a couple of staff that are really instrumental in helping to get this document forward. I've got Becky Kahn, our Senior Civil Engineer with our Traffic and Transportation Group, Rick Thomas with our Program and Project Management Office, and of course, our Director Jennifer Walker. So with that, next slide, please. As the County Manager mentioned, this is the formal presentation of the Transportation Improvement Program to the County Commissioners. This does happen every year. And at the end of this presentation, as the County Manager said, I'll kind of walk you through what the next steps will be or action requested of the Board when this document will finally get adopted. So prior to adoption of the budget, which the Board typically does in December, the Board is required by RCW and WAC to adopt a six-year transportation program. And as a county engineer, I'm also required to recommend an annual construction program, also called the Annual Road Program, which really lays out the plan for construction and maintenance of all the county roads and really is the first year of the TIP document itself. Adoption of the TIP and the Annual Road Program authorizes the county engineer to approve right-of-way plans for specific projects in the TIP and in the Annual Road Program. Through WAC 13620, county engineers also required to have all county bridges regularly inspected and to provide you an annual bridge report. And it requires staff to consult the bridge report when identifying projects and evaluating those for the TIP document. Once adopted by the Board, the TIP satisfies legislative requirements for transportation growth management and for distribution of state and federal dollars for local transportation projects. The public is also invited to participate in the TIP process each year through public hearings hosted by the Commissioners and the Planning Commission. And what I'll be doing today is walking you through each of the different chapters in the TIP document. And one of the things that we've done over the past few years is really try to make the document a more user-friendly document that is understandable, readable by the public, other agencies, and such. So we've got it laid out into several different chapters. And again, I'll go through each of these chapters. We won't be diving into the weeds on several of these chapters, but it's really to provide you kind of an overview of the document and how it's used. And starting with Chapter 1, which is kind of the foundation of the document itself. Chapter 1 is a summary of the all the rules, the RCWs and WACs that guide our program and help us guide how we operate the whole transportation system. Really, it's the why we do what we do. It includes references to the RCWs and WACs that drive our programs. And I'll just kind of walk through real briefly what some of these things are. The new and bridge road construction maintenance preservation needs to be financed by the road fund. Those are outlined in this, as well as the requirement for preparing the TIP, which looks out for the ensuing six years. Requires creation of the county road fund. And again, all of these are laid out in Chapter 1, and I won't go into those in any further detail unless you'd like me to. In Chapter 2, now that we've gone through what guides our program, we're gonna look at the funding sources. Where do we typically get our funding for all of our transportation projects? And it really comes from a variety of sources. But the major drivers of that are the road levy, the property tax, and the county's portion of the state gas tax. In this chapter is a description of the major funding programs, whether it's the traffic impact fees. There's a host of federal and state grants that we typically try to tap. Real estate excise tax, or REIT 2, has been a valuable funding tool for a fish passage program or pavement preservation program. And looking ahead, the Black Lake Bridge approach replacement and also the US 12 and Sargent roundabout projects. Those have been really important projects for us in which we've been able to use some of the real estate excise tax money. Whenever we can, we use local money to leverage for grants. And we have been very successful at that in the past. And already this year, we've received $2 million of grant funds. We've applied for another $14 million of other grant funds. The funds we've received so far were for projects at Pleasant Laid Elementary. That's a Safe Roads to School project. Also, the Yelm Highway Bike and Ped Crossings, three locations on that. And Martin Wayne Hensley Street ADA improvements. We've received a $100,000 grant on that. Moving to Chapter 3, so we talked about kind of the requirements. We've talked about the funding sources. Now we'll look at how we use and how we collect and how we spend some of those funding sources. The TIP includes a six-year look at both the revenues and expenditures for the road fund. And the county code requires Public Works to provide you information on these collected and the amounts used for various transportation projects. And later on this week, we'll be discussing some of those during the CIP presentation on Wednesday. We'll be talking about the CIP projects and the transportation projects in that session as well. What you'll see in that is the numbers for the projects, the revenue and expenses. They're not final at this point, but you will be getting a chance to review those during the review of the budget itself. One of the key things that the Board took action on recently was updating our traffic impact fees. Those impact fees are a one-time charge. Developers help pay. They pay to help finance some of our transportation projects. And they pay their fair share of the cost of parks, roads, schools, and other facilities that serve those new developments. Those funds cannot be used for operation, maintenance, repair, alteration, or replacement of existing capital facilities and can't be used to put into the general fund. The fees that they pay are clearly linked to the added service, not some arbitrary amount. They're fairly well established. And those funds, traffic impact fees, have been very helpful for us in advancing, as I mentioned earlier, Marvin Road, Yelm Meridian, Johnson Point, and Hawks Prairie. The amount we collect every year varies from year to year, and it's been going up. Typically, it's about 1.5 million to 1.9 million per year. In the fiscal year ending in 2021, we collected just over $1.9 million. This year, in 2022, we were programmed to spend about $2.1 million of traffic impact fees. Looking ahead to 2023, which is the first year of this TIP, we are programmed to spend about $3.1 million of traffic impact fees. Those will help support our Marvin Road project, our Little Rock Road and 113th Avenue Bridge Replacement Project, the Sargent Road Roundabout, Johnson Point Hawksbury, Old 99 and Tilly, Mud Bay and Evergreen Parkway. We also use the traffic impact fees to fund or reimburse past projects that did add capacity to that. So each year, we program about $250,000 to pay back the road fund for those projects that we did before implementation of the traffic impact fee program. And as I mentioned, if we look at the revenue for the road fund, we don't have those final numbers yet, but again, you'll be hearing those as you review the budget. But looking at, just to give you some perspective of what that is for 2022, we are programmed to get $22 million from the road levy, the property tax, 5.1 million from the county's share of the gas tax. Then when you look at how we spend it, so those are the major two components of where we get our funding. But it's interesting to see where we spend that money, where we put our emphasis. 26% of our funding goes toward maintenance and preservation. 26% goes toward maintenance. 17% goes toward preservation. Of course, that varies a little bit from year to year. 8% goes toward traffic operations. Only 8% of our money goes toward administration. Now we'll look at kind of the detailed look at some of our programs and how we prioritize the projects and the work we do. So really, programs, I'm gonna talk back and forth a little bit about programs and projects, but programs really define our priorities in Public Works and the operation and maintenance of our whole road system. Each of the projects come from a program. So we have programs, kind of the bigger pool of projects. We might have a safety, well, we have a safety program. We have a bridge program. We have a capacity program. So when we look at each of those programs, we look at the potential projects that might be, say, how many bridges do we need to work under, need to replace? We look at all those bridge projects that are potential projects. And then we have come up with a way to prioritize. What are the most important bridge projects we have? What are the ones we're most likely to be able to do? And we do that with each of our programs. So Bridges Capacity, Culverts, Fish Passage, Pavement Preservation, Bike Ped. These are all the different programs we look at each year. So as we prioritize projects within each program, we come up with a number one, number two, number three project within each program. Somehow, then, we have to balance which number one project is the most important for the Public Works Department to advance. So how does our number one bridge project compare to our number one capacity project? Compared to our number one safety project? So we've got a fairly robust way we do that. And actually, we're required to prioritize our projects by the Washington Administrative Code. So what I want to do is walk you through, again, a high level, an example of how we do that. And I'm gonna look at our bridge projects. So if you look at our TIP, we have a small number of bridge projects coming up in the future, in the next six years. But we have 147 bridges in the county that we're responsible for. Not all of those need work, fortunately. But when I look at two bridges, for example, one's called the L-5 Bridge. That's a short bridge on Little Rock Road near 113th Avenue. And I'm gonna compare that to the O-12 Bridge on the Yelm Highway, which is the bridge by the Amtrak station over the railroad tracks. So we're gonna be actively advancing the L-5 Bridge. And the O-12 Bridge is gonna be parked out there in the later years of the six-year TIP. So you might ask, why are we doing one and not the other? Well, I'll tell you. The L-5 Bridge was really important for us because we suspect that that bridge has no steel reinforcing in the concrete abutments. The bridge is similarly designed to a bridge we replaced on Little Rock Road a few years ago called the L-4 Bridge. We had to replace that bridge because a crack developed in the foundation of the bridge. And we looked in the crack. We saw no steel reinforcing in there. The bridge was built in the 1920s. We had no design or construction records for what that bridge was. So we've been inspecting it regularly. But when we looked in the cracks, saw there's no steel, we became greatly concerned. So we ended up replacing that bridge. This bridge, we've been monitoring and inspecting regularly. But because we suspect there's no steel in there, it ranked fairly high for us. In addition, that bridge is used by over 7,000 vehicles each day. And the big reason we're advancing this one instead of the O-12 Bridge is we did get funding for this one. We do have STBG funding to replace this. We're programmed to replace it in 2023.
SPG, but it's coming up.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Surface Transportation Block Grants, a federal funding through TRPC. So when I compare the L-5 Bridge to the O-12 Bridge, you might ask again, why are we replacing this smaller bridge compared to the O-12? The O-12 is used by over 11,000 vehicles per day. The bridge condition is such that it did rank high for us. It's functionally obsolete, which means, a good way to describe that is there's a wide road going up to the bridge. At the bridge, it necks down. It's a lot more narrow. Then past the bridge, it gets wider. So that's an example of what a functionally obsolete bridge would look like. So it's got all these check marks, and you might think, why aren't we doing that? Well, the big thing on that is it's probably gonna be about a $20 million bridge. So there's very few, well, actually, no pots of money that we found that has an eligible project of that scope and scale that we would be competitive for. So the L-5 Bridge, we were able to secure grant funding for that. As I mentioned, we're using traffic impact fee funding. But we have been looking and we have not been able to find any grant funding that would help us build the O-12 Bridge. And the application that we could submit, we would not be very competitive for at all. But we're keeping the O-12 Bridge on our TIP because having it on our TIP allows us to be able to look for that funding and apply for the grant funding when it does come, if it does come. So to move on to Chapter 5. Chapter 5, we call it the Annual Road Program. It's really just the first year of our TIP. This is a requirement, as I mentioned, of the Washington Administrative Code. And it includes a list of the projects that we anticipate working on next year. Any changes to this document, once it's adopted, has to be approved by unanimous vote of the County Commission and would have to be done by resolution. This doesn't happen very often. It did happen in early 2021 when we had to change the name or the description of a road to meet some county road board administration requirements. So we did that in January of 2021. And it was done quite quickly to meet some timing requirements, which then allowed us to apply for grant funding later on that month. So beyond that, it's pretty rare that we ask the Board to adopt the Annual Road Program or to amend it, rather. So in April of each year, what we do, we submit a report to the county road board, kind of giving a report of how we worked or how we completed the Annual Road Program. It's called the Annual Construction Report. We submit a host of reports every year to the county road board. And in April, we submit one that's a report on how we did on this Annual Road Program. So Chapter 6 is moving on to the next, actually, Chapter 6 is the whole six years of the TIP. Again, Chapter 5 was the first year of the TIP. Chapter 6 is all six years of the TIP. And you may recall, we presented a list of new projects to you a few weeks ago in June. And we're presenting additional projects this Wednesday during the CIP presentation. And as we did in June and as we will on Wednesday, we'll go through a little bit more detail of what some of those projects are. It's important to note, in the TIP, from the six-year look, there's several projects that show a $50,000 expenditure out of the last couple of years of the TIP. These projects don't have sufficient funding to complete the project or in some cases, even enough to get started. They're included in the TIP, as I mentioned, as the O-12 Bridge. They're included in there. So it makes those projects eligible for us to apply for grant funding and be eligible to receive it. And the projects in the TIP, there's a priority number on the left-hand side. Those are in priority order. So it goes, in this case, 1 through 47, with Marvin Road being our highest priority project next year and Kingham Street pedestrian improvements being one of our lowest. Now, it's important to note that we may be working on priority number 1 and priority number 8, priority number 9. So you won't see us necessarily only working on the first six projects. But we'll be working on those that we have funding for and we're operating in some critical timelines to reach construction. Any questions on this so far? It's a ton of information.
I have questions, but I didn't know if I was supposed to be waiting.
Oh, no, it can't be interrupted.
Okay, you gotta, you gotta read it. You're on just on page 6.
Madam Chair, I'd like to manage this.
Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards. And then, let's see. Just ask the questions that you have until now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just really, don't go into detail on this. Just explain this to help me understand. Why, again, is the rush? I mean, we're doing this now and we're gonna make a decision today about referring or something.
So this is the formal presentation of the TIP, which I'm required to do each year. The decision we're looking for today is to give staff the direction to submit an IAS to schedule a public hearing, which will be late August. The Board won't adopt this until December.
Okay. And we did this last December, didn't we?
Every year.
Something very similar to this.
Yep.
Then on page 3, you talked about REIT. But is that REIT 1 or 2? Or could it be both, depending on the type of bridge activity?
We've only used REIT 2.
That's only 2?
Yep.
Okay. And we never use 1 on roads?
It's not allowed.
Roads type stuff, okay.
It's allowable, but we don't.
Okay. Good enough. And on page 2, satisfies legislative requirement. Is that just the annual report requirement?
Oh, there's a host of requirements on there. One of them is the Board is required to adopt an Annual Road Program, which, as I mentioned, is the first year of the TIP. Also required to adopt the TIP itself. And those are probably two of the key things. A lot of those are outlined in the chapter. But the county is also required to have a county road fund established, which we do. So all those things are outlined in the first.
That's okay. I don't wanna get in depth on this.
Yes.
Okay, how about, you mentioned public involvement already. So a public hearing is coming up. That's what we're gonna be setting, right?
Correct.
Public hearing. That's on page 2. On 5, there's reimbursement of previously built projects. And I'm just curious what that entails. You said something about before we had this fund or...
Before we had the traffic impact fees, you know, we build projects forever. And before we had traffic impact fees, we built projects that added capacity to the road system. Had we had traffic impact fees 100 years ago, we would have always been able to use traffic impact fees to fund that part of a project that added capacity. But because we built a bunch of projects, we're going back. And I think we, I forget how far we went back.
10 years.
Yeah, 10 years.
And that's what's allowed, is you can go back 10 years once you've created an impact fee fund? Is that what it is? And you're allowed to kind of draw down what you spent? So that goes in, back into the general fund or back into the REIT?
County road fund.
It goes back into road fund?
Correct.
From, I guess, from the Traffic Improvement Program?
From the Traffic Impact Fee.
And what was the, why the change? I mean, when did we create this fund?
Traffic impact fees were started in 2012, I believe, in 2011. 2011.
Okay, and so you're going back to 2001 to pay off some expenditures?
It has the potential to do that. If your projects are on that list, then you can pay those projects.
But you can only go back, so like, we can only go back now to 12, 2012, to try and pay off some of that?
Okay.
And then on the O-12 Bridge, you said that's gonna be $20 million. Seems like I recall a briefing in the past where we limited weight on that bridge or limited something to make it pass.
We did.
You didn't mention that.
It's not weight restricted now.
We did something a year or so ago, didn't you?
O-12, yes, I'm sorry.
The large trucks that have like 67.
Yeah, that's part of the... And is that kind of to extend the life of that bridge? Is that what that was about?
It's really to make sure that the vehicles, and these are the extraordinarily large vehicles. They're not everyday commercial traffic. They're the...
I believe that restriction was in, I had response to the changes on the federal guidelines. That's the call they weighed is managed. So it was more about the FHWA and the federal guidelines changed in terms of the weighted restrictions. And that was a result of the action.
Okay, so structurally, it's okay? I mean, it's just didn't meet certain new criteria?
Correct.
And then that, you mentioned, you know, it narrows down the road. Have we had traffic problems? I don't know, backups, accidents, deaths, or anything? Do you rate that? Does that get you a higher priority? If you have those kind of issues, and is that how you get there? I mean, I'm trying to think. I don't think we have two-lane roads going either way, so. I mean, we do have two lanes. We don't have four lanes.
Right, the bridge is two-lane with shoulders. Beyond that, I think there's a turn lane, center turn lane.
Not on the bridge.
Right, but you said... Going into the train track and then that one where the light is. Correct. So I'm just, I liked what you said about it gives you the ability to search out funds because I don't know where we would ever come up with $20 million. And that's what I'm wondering. So structurally, it's fine. We don't have a safety record there that's adverse or anything. I mean, we're not in particular trouble on that one.
Correct. Correct.
It's banely so we can locate those fundings, is that right?
Yep.
Okay, well, that's, I hope I asked some questions, as my seatmates might have. So they won't have to ask, we'll see. I'm good, thank you, Chair.
Can Commissioner Mance answer questions?
Trying to figure out what the scope of this plan is in terms of what has to be in here versus not. Because I'm seeing, like, I'm seeing road improvements, okay, pretty obvious. Bridge replacements, I'm seeing fish passage. I'm seeing pedestrian stuff. I'm seeing, like, Thurston County Mobility Strategy and local road safety plans. So it sounds like planning efforts. Like, what has to be here versus, give me an example of something that doesn't have to be here. I mean, what has to go into this process? Because it sounds like it's more than just improving the roads.
Yeah, it's, if you look at where we.
Trails is in here, for example.
Yeah, if you look at where we spend road fund, I mean, that'd be a really good first brush way to look at that. I mean, obviously, solid waste projects won't be, stormwater projects funded by the utility would not necessarily be in here. But wherever we're looking to make.
Transportation.
Yes.
Anything that road fund money can be spent on then has to touch through this process. And then, so like, looking at trails, I see trail enhancement study and is that another? So this may be a Robin question, but I know in the budget last year, we allocated an additional $1 million for a Let's Connect Trail Program. And I haven't heard a keep about that since last fall. When, when does the board get to weigh in on how that money gets spent? And which, and does that have to be part of this process?
So that is something that the department is working on, what the program will look like?
The signature set aside that you put for trails.
Right, correct. So we are actually coming forward. I'm not sure if it'll be ready for the CIP briefing yet. But it will be coming forward to the board this year, a briefing with the board for possible options that you may have. That's what we're putting together.
And if there's a project that the board's like, yeah, we want to do that, then it has to, this has to be amended to include that? Or how, how do those two things interact?
It would probably be going forward next year.
Okay.
We do have, we do have Parks and Trails program as well that's part of the Parks and Trails CIP that you'll see on Wednesday. So there are other projects that are not necessarily on the transportation improvement program that would be a part of the Parks program.
So trails can go into both of these different documents?
Yes.
All of them will be duplicated or there's some distinction between?
But also, they have to be as part of the couple facilities plan. And that is really an essential piece of document that we need to include all the projects that we work on next year.
Right, and the Let's Connect program, that was authorized under REIT, not roads. So you might not see it in this document, but it has to be in the CIP.
Which will be on Wednesday.
We have a Parks and Trail item in the CIP that would cover anything that we might want to do this year.
Years ago, the board then declared the trail systems to be part of the transportation system in the county. And that's why you see some trail projects in the transportation improvement program.
Okay, and I'm probably getting ahead of myself, but I'm just curious about this. The prior, like, how will that come to the board? I mean, I've heard there's all kinds of trail planning projects going around in the county. And, you know, it's not just about, you know, it's not like, oh, this bridge doesn't have steel, like, public safety, like, how are those gonna be? Are those gonna be brought? Somebody's gonna determine a priority list? Or is the board gonna decide that? Because it doesn't really fit into this, the way of thinking in terms of, you know, a trail.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm trying to figure out, how is this gonna come to us? And where will we have decision-making authority to, to go one direction versus another? There's a big plan to connect across capital to capital. There's a big plan to connect down into Rochester and Gate Road Trail. There's a big, you know, there's, Tom Waters got links to trying to link up to the South County. I mean, there's so many trail ideas. And I'm wondering how you're gonna present that to the board? What's the prioritization gonna look like for that money that we allocated for that purpose?
So some of the, some of the examples that you just gave are like in the city. So those aren't county projects. But what you'll see on Wednesday are some of the program in that we have for Parks and Trails. So Wednesday, new projects will be presented. That capital facility, that capital improvement program will be presented.
I would also add that it is always the prerogative of the board to propose projects and to prioritize spending. So if there's something you want to see on that plan, that needs to be communicated to Romero, who can share it with Public Works.
Okay, Madam Chair, I think I'm good.
Could I have a follow-up, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
Following up on Commissioner Mance's questions. If we do the trail projects, does that then cause the road projects to be, I don't know, are they extended? Or does the road activity suffer? I mean, if we got alligator cracking in a road, now, if we do trails, then we don't fix that road? I mean, I'm trying to think of the priority of expenditures.
Well, we have one more layer of prioritization that we do internally in Public Works. So starting at the base, we prioritize projects within programs. Then we prioritize all the number-one projects within each program. But then what we do further, we look at the transportation projects, the Parks and Trails, solid waste utilities. And because we have a limited number of resources, we then prioritize how we allocate our resources. So basically, what do we work on? So within the Public Works Department, what you'll see each year is the department proposing projects that are, what we believe is the department, are the department's highest priority projects. So it's not all road-centric. We look at, you know, the park and trail, well, or the trail on the road, for example. What is the department's highest priority? So I think we might get to that, that kind of thing. We'll look at longevity.
Today, as we move through here?
No, that's, no, that, that will be.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wonder, I wasn't gonna ask you more if you're gonna cover it, but if you're not.
I'm gonna jump in again, though, because I'm gonna say, Scott said, there's limited resources. There's so much money in the road fund or any other fund.
Yes.
And it is the prerogative of the board. I mean, you could say, don't do anything but fix the roads with your money this year. That is your prerogative. The department will not propose that, but you could choose to do that.
Okay.
And the reason that you're having this briefing at this time and the CIP on Wednesday is this is your opportunity to say what goes in the plan. So if you don't like the way this plan is, this is the board's plan, you can direct staff to change it as you see fit.
And that'll be finalized.
That's why you see it now instead of December.
But it will be finalized in December.
You will adopt it in December. But you need to make changes now so that we can do all the appropriate paperwork and have it ready for the public at the right time and write the resolutions and all the rest of it.
What I'm wondering about on this follow-up is we recently reduced the, I guess I'm gonna call it chip seal, maybe maintenance program, from 50 miles to 40 miles, say, because we lacked revenue to do 50 miles. And so that comes back to what Robin is explaining, that, I mean, if our roads are gonna deteriorate, what's our priority? You know, would we say something like, well, I don't know how we can build trails when the road's got potholes and we can't fix them? So that's what I'm trying to figure out, is that prioritization that leads up to that. So what about those 10 miles that we didn't do? But shortly after we made that decision, I'm gonna say it, one to six weeks later, we were presented with another plan. And that had to do with spending more money than we originally thought because of inflation and all that. You know, so we needed to come up with another million and a half or something for a particular project. Well, we had that money to do that, but we didn't have enough to do the 10 miles. So it all kind of has to fit together. And I'm just trying to figure out, where do we get to that situation where, other than we go, we hear from constituents talking about potholes, you know? And I suppose that would pique their interest, but, okay.
So related to the chip seal program, it was at least a matter of timing. Because the board approved a certain amount as to how much this chip seal program will be in 2022. Did this due to inflation, came higher. So in order for, it was not necessarily about the lack of revenue. It was the lack of expenditure authority. So the department, what it did, but responsive to the limits of the budget authority, came back with less miles. But it was soon after that that everything started becoming more of an issue because not just this project faced that. Other projects, like you heard, the Sergeant Road and any other projects the board presented to you, didn't have the ability to reduce the scope to meet the budget authority the board approved. The chip seal had that ability in order to meet the requirements of the budget authority. Was not necessarily related to the lack of revenue. And the remaining 10 miles, I believe that is coming up next year. And I believe the department, based on the bidding conditions, they're gonna be probably looking into next year as to how we're gonna be addressing that absent of coming back with another budget amendment.
And if the price of oil, for an example, it's one of the big drivers, I think it went from, let's say, 40 to 100.
Yeah.
If it doesn't come back down, we're just not gonna be able to do it?
Not necessarily. I think at the end of the day, it's probably dependent to the end of fund balance of the road fund. And in the long term, it's gonna be an impact upstream.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Really quickly, Scott, I have questions on the overview, the County Road Safety Improvement Program. And I'm wondering if, you know, things like the signs were, we're supposed to now change them for federal mandate. Does that include things like that? Or is that just something completely different?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
You're talking about the signs, the road signs?
Oh. So now that I'm tracking, I'm sorry, could you say it again? I was trying to figure.
The County Road Safety Improvement Program, does it, does it include things like the signs that were, we were supposed to change or are changing due to federal mandate?
The street signs, that's different. The Highway Safety Improvement Program will include other projects county-wide that will specifically address safety. So curb signing, lane delineations, striping.
Rumble strips.
Rumble strips.
Why?
My favorite thing, you just have to bring it up.
But that's part of the safety.
It is.
Okay, thank you. The rest of my questions have been asked.
Okay, so, next slide, please. So in Chapter Six of the tip, and any may recall, we had the briefing in June where we presented some new projects. In that, we noted that there were six projects that are new to the tip this year. Six projects that you won't see on the tip this year, so being removed from the current tip. And Commissioner Edwards, you had asked in the briefing we had in June about the cost, the general cost of some of the studies that we're proposing. And generally, they are $100,000 to $150,000. We've got two of the studies planned for next year. And one is programmed out for 2025. That one is the Fertree Rainier Road Intersection Improvement Study. So it's $100,000 to $150,000, depending on the.
Talk about the deliverables of the study, like what?
Yeah, so when we, when we get the study complete, what we'll have is an alternative analysis and a recommended path forward. So basically, we'll know the best path forward and about what that project should cost. Once we have that, we're gonna be in a position to apply for funding because we'll have a good idea of what the project should cost, which is one of the key elements of getting that external funding. So the studies are a really critical piece for us. And we've been doing that the last few years, really to our success because it gives us a firm number we can go on. So what had happened a few times in the past is we would look at past projects, say, a past intersection project, and say, well, that project cost $1 million, let's add some inflation. The next one might cost $1.4 million. But when we do the studies, we get a much better feel for what that project will cost and some of the details of it. So our scoping and our planning and our estimates have been much, much better the last few years. So it's been a real success adding some road fund to do these studies, which is why they're on the six-year tip right now. My next slide, please. Chapter Seven is talking about our 20-year look at our tip. So we've really been focused on the first six years. But really, we look 20 years down the road. And part of the reason we've done this is because we know that the county is growing. We expect it to continue to grow. By 2040, we expect to have 370,000 residents or people living in the county. That's from TRPC. That represents an 80,000-person increase in about the next 18 years or so. So the projects that you see are really investments into the future of our community, future into our planning horizon for helping support those 80,000 new people and then 370,000, or the, the other folks that are here now, 290,000 or so. Most of the projects that are on this 20-year, 20-year look are identified by doing transportation modeling. So we're looking at where we see growth coming into the county. We're looking at what the traffic patterns are. And we're looking at some of those choke points and where the traffic is gonna be directed to. When we project what the traffic will be, we look at the current configuration of the roads and the intersections and say, you know, in 18 years or 20 years, can this road handle it? In many cases, or in all cases, the projects you see on this list, they've not been very well scoped, but they're really just identified problems in a very, very high-level look at what might it cost? There's so many variables that could go into what can happen in 20 years that doing a study-level project estimate for a project 20 years out really isn't worth the effort at this point. But these are things that we're looking at. And as time approaches and the community grows, we can start refining some of our numbers and trying to identify what that scope scheduled budget is for each of those future projects. The other key part of this is, the third bullet notes is, we are required to have this to establish traffic impact fees and be able to spend traffic impact fees on. So our whole traffic impact fee program is really looking out, not just at one and six years, but looking at 20 years to see what our growth needs will be. And now, Chapter Eight, the final chapter of the tip. And I'm very sorry that our traffic engineer, who's so passionate about bridges, he's not here to talk about bridges, which truly is his passion. But I'm here to try to convey his excitement. And I will do my very best to do that. As I mentioned earlier, the WACR, Harzow County Engineers to submit this written report of bridge inspection findings and our efforts in overseeing the 147 bridge program that we have. And I'll walk through kind of the condition of some of our bridges. We think it's fairly well laid out in this tip document. And I know you get 15,000 documents a day to look at. So we try to make this as user-friendly as we can, not only for you, but for the public. Of our 147 bridges, 103 of those exceed 20 feet and qualifies as a reportable bridge to the National Bridge Inventory. What that means is bridges over 20 feet are eligible for federal funding. So that's really good news, that 130, 103 bridges are eligible for federal funding. But it's not good news because that means 44 of our bridges are not eligible for federal funding. So the funding for those will have to come from other sources.
Could you, could tell us why?
The federal government, I think, I don't know the genesis for their 20-foot length. My guess is that there's so many bridges out there already that they had to draw the cutoff somewhere. Perhaps the county manager might know. Do you know that?
That's the federal criteria, is 20 feet is considered to be a bridge span. Less than 18 feet is a covert. And that's how the federal government has, has determined. And the federal funding that comes to bridge replacement only addresses bridges beyond 20 feet. And that's what Scott is.
That's what you're calling reportable?
Correct.
Reportable means more than 20 feet?
Yeah.
And therefore eligible for federal?
Right, correct.
Correct. Okay.
And has additional requirements in terms of inspection and all of it.
Could could I get a clarification on one other issue? I can't see Madam Chair, so I'm just going to kind of open here.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, on page nine, you made reference to, uh. I guess that, uh, twenty-three to twenty-eight, uh, timeframe. But you show sixteen projects, but you said something about there's forty-three.
Correct.
Projects. And that's on another sheet, we just, and we're not even going there, right?
It's in your attachment.
Okay.
It's a number to you.
And is it the twenty-year list you referred to, uh, on the last?
No, it's it's different.
Eight.
So the table that you see sixteen projects on, on page nine is the first of, I think it's three pages of projects that totaled at forty-seven projects.
Okay.
Um, later on, on the twenty-year look, that's a different list of projects.
Okay. And twenty years, I mean, you don't have to be on the twenty-year one to get on the six one. Correct, that kind of a thing.
Correct.
They're on the horizon, that's what we're in.
And it's just there because they're out there, we'll need to do something someday.
Yeah, and and we have had projects certainly come from the twenty-year plan onto the six-year plan. Um, as growth changes, funding comes through perhaps, uh, or, uh, something else changes in the in the field that might necessitate necessitate, uh, earlier action.
Is 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 a window of time, if you look at twenty years from now, then, uh, Scott, uh, he spoke about the population growth. Right, and and the population growth will impact capacity, uh, needs and the and the road system. But with twenty years, a lot of things changes, development patterns changes, city pattern changes, uh, city improvements also changes. So there is always an opportunity to revise that twenty-year list before they mix it to the to the six-year TIP. But it's always to have the the foresight overview as to what the twenty-year, uh, look will be for the transportation system in the county.
Sure. Um, so going to the bridges again, um. Of our hundred and forty-seven bridges, seventeen bridges in our bridge inventory have exceeded their theoretical design life of seventy-five years. Well, nine of those bridges were built in the nineteen twenties and soon will be celebrating their one-hundredth birthday. Um, those bridges, uh, that we suspect have a similar design than the L four bridge I mentioned, we replaced a few years ago. We're replacing L five next year, there's a few others that we suspect are of similar design. So on those, we, uh, ramped up our inspections, we're required by federal guidelines to inspect every bridge every two years. But there's some bridges we inspect every year, just out of an abundance of caution. As we, oh, uh, next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry. There you go, sorry about that, um, when we evaluate our bridges, uh, we look at the load ratings that we mentioned a few moments ago. Um, we, all of our bridges have been evaluated for the federal, um, special hauling vehicles. As a result of that, we've had the Holmes Island Bridge also posted, that's the, uh, called the H three bridge, it's a small bridge over to the Holmes Island, fairly self-explanatory. Um, when we look at our bridges also, we look at the scour evaluation, what that means is, um, a scour critical bridge is a bridge that. Could be susceptible to the foundation scouring out in high flows. Fifteen of our bridges are categorized as scour critical, does not mean you're in any danger, it just means that. The condition of the bridge or the condition of the stream is such that, um, it warrants additional inspections, we do that to make sure that they continue to be in safe condition. But it's just a a technical term that we are required to look at to see if a bridge, uh, could be susceptible to scour, to basically to washing out. Um, of our bridges, um, we talked a bit ago about functionally obsolete, you know, where the road necks down to the bridge and then expands beyond that. Uh, nineteen of the bridges we have are functionally obsolete, which again means typically that they were built to a design standard years ago. But the roads have been upgraded on either side, but the bridge has not. Um, I'm very glad to say that we have no structurally deficient bridges in our bridge inventory. We replaced our last structurally deficient bridge in early two thousand twenty-one, that was the Reader Road Bridge. So right now, we've got no bridges, which I think is a, a huge plus for us, and I think it's a testament to the. Bridge work we've done and really the the funding and the allocation that the board has awarded or afforded Public Works.
What's your traffic on that bridge under your roof?
Um, not much, I believe it's about ten.
Is it?
Yeah, and.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, ten is a stretch, but I think that's what the road is rated. But what it does do, though, is it provides access to agricultural area and timber harvest area on the north side of the bridge.
Did we get any money from that?
That bridge is mostly federal funded too, so it was.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um. One of the things to note is, um, bridges are such a high ticket item, we rely heavily on that federal funding for it. Even with the infrastructure package that was passed recently, that funding is still very, very competitive. So rest assured that when we have a bridge, the O twelve bridge or others, we are actively pursuing any and all grant opportunities we can to try to fund any of these bridges.
I see the county manager's got his hand up.
Yeah, sorry.
Hey Scott, it's a fair to say, the federal government very seldom funds, uh, projects that are, um. Operationally deficient.
Correct, yeah, the the federal funding, uh, because it is limited and there's such a demand nationwide. They really focus on those that, uh, where there's, I guess, a more critical risk of traveling public. So a bridge such as O twelve that is still structurally sound, but maybe operationally not ideal. Those typically don't rank as high, um, in the stricter, the tight competition for federal funds, that's a great point, thank you.
I want to do a time check really quick, uh, it is nine fifty-six.
Um, I think I am just wrapping up.
Perfect.
So we have a few repairs planned this year, uh, Stanwood Island Bridge, we're repairing some cracking and delamination in some of the pile caps. I mentioned L five bridge, we're working on replacing next year, uh, the Black Lake Belmore Bridge approaches will be, uh, doing next year as well. And with that, our next steps for this tip document. Um, with your direction, staff would submit a AIS to schedule a public hearing for late August. Um, the board would have time to look at the, uh, the finances on this during the budget deliberations, uh, board adoption would be. December sixteenth, I believe it was, and additional detail on the project will be having with the board briefing on this Wednesday during the CIP presentation. And with that, it was a mouthful, a lot to digest, thank you for your time, and, uh, in the last two minutes, I'd welcome any questions, however much time you do.
Okay, with that, any questions or are we ready for a decision? Commissioner Edwards, I see your hand up, go ahead, sir.
Uh, maybe just to follow up, you're going to think this is kind of crazy, but. The the Romans built the aqueducts two thousand years ago, you know, bridges and such. And we're talking about replacing hundred-year-old bridges, do we ever get to the point where we really try to extend things out? I mean, you're like, the one that's, uh, uh, no, no metal. You know, rather than replace that whole bridge, why is it that we can't just? I don't know, put steel plate and put paper over it or something, I mean, would, do we ever try to be? As cost effective as we possibly can, or you can't get money if you don't do certain things or what?
Yeah, we we always try to be as cost effective as we can, where we, um, can make repairs, we do, we prefer that because we typically can afford to do that. Um, but the big thing with getting any grant money, federal money is where we get most of our bridge money. Um, they will require us to upgrade that bridge with the current standards, so if we choose to do something different. We could do that in some cases, but we wouldn't likely get any grant funding for it.
Okay, so they've got us locked into the new bill rather than the that job.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, answer questions?
No.
Okay, with that, uh, let's go ahead and go for a decision, do I see thumbs up?
Just to authorize, to see an AIS to bring, set up public hearing, that's where we're just going to work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we will be seeing this on future agenda, with that, it is nine fifty-nine, thank you all, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Good, Scott.